Okay, then we're not gonna stop or anything.
Okay.
If it's an extra one, we'll scoot down because it's hard for tans.
Okay. There you go.
Is this extra?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, with the construction that's going down with all the different projects. They way up.
We got six cars. I guess we'll go one, two, three.
Would you like to be in the street?
Not like last year.
Well, sick where you're at, you know, they always do so, you know.
Hospitals.
Yes, they're always got some. Project to rebuild this area, remodel that area, you know, so that's.
She's getting mixed up. If you could connect it one to one.
Because there's still airports.
Get a little closer to the frame here.
No, you know what, I'm gonna say.
And your flies.
It's a lot of jobs.
Sure. Very nice.
Just wish it would've been. Yeah, I, there's a.
You know what, I'm not into that, hey, let's shoot. I still have a hard time believing that it's cheaper to build from the ground up than it is to go in and put it in. That building isn't that old now. But, uh, you don't know. Right.
Honestly, I think that's all, although I got stuff, yeah, I got stuff to do. I gotta clean out the old house.
Right, you just don't know. Right, the machinery and stuff that they put in there probably is the foundations were designed for that to begin.
So. She, she lives and works, she volunteers and wanted to keep people up.
Yeah, I do. Um, I had, had a conversation with Tom whether he thought he would be interested in it. I have a thought that's giving him a.
He's, he's saying somebody who likes.
Yeah, I know, I see, though she's a woman, I think she would be good. I just wanna make sure that someone that can actually get through things. You know, like, I'm a little bit sensitive to, because like, we have like. You know. And then he sits on it, Brian Martin sits on it, Mark down. Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that, I wanna make sure that. So, it's not anything like. I just want to, you guys. And that's, that's only, that's the only reason.
Well, I mean, so do you think.
You know, my point is, I don't have to.
I think so.
Yeah, I'm just happy to see.
Yeah, I think. It is, I mean, we're, you know, we just wanna make sure that people stay home. Let's see.
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind. They take about ten times as much as I said.
That's okay.
I mean, as long as you. I do, of course. Yes. Two weeks in term. This will be the twenty first.
It's frightened, everybody got caught.
No, it gets frustrating when you get stumped.
Trying to work on some of that design or whatever.
It's that tight squeeze, isn't it?
Fresh off, fresh out of re.
Still warm?
No, it's still, took me a while to pick, took me a while to pick it up.
It takes a lot to.
It's already on. Two, two, I think I would see the S process.
Yeah, and so you can make these as nice as you want.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we like, yeah, they feel really good. Yeah, really thoughtful, nice of them.
Wolf.
Get settled in the school.
At some point you know, you're opposite and stuff like that, I was wondering why it's like. Then, then she does all the science and skate, like, do all mine like this, so there, there's not an easy way to do, do different. You've noticed that, yeah, you, you, one or the other, as far as.
You wouldn't think that PowerPoint would've, like, Microsoft would've figured that out. People would want to do different ideas. Like, you're trying to merge things that are more, you know, handout. But no.
You get one or the other.
You get one or the other.
And there's not one way to convert them either, you're, you're carrying the stuff.
Yeah, you're completely redoing yourself.
All right. Is, uh, is, uh, is Karen here? Oh, sorry.
Just get me.
Okay, okay. Um, should I go find the other commissioner?
I thought that they were with you, that's why.
They were, they were, but then we drove separately, so, which was kind of a miracle.
I know.
Are you amazed by that? I'll be right back, I'll find it. All right. We gotta find it.
I wanna see outside of that. What's the other one, Mary Ellen?
Yeah, that one's, I'm not gonna money for that one.
I hear the. No, I've never been there. There's Charlotte, because they're not that fair. Yeah, any business from here will be.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
If I had the.
If it's so, like, where they're actually cooking in Prairians, that would be.
I think he likes the big schools. Definitely likes.
Are you not looking at the?
Keep visiting the Ohio State University, unless you really like.
When I was over there.
I think there's just something.
Doing the murals behind us and looking at.
Yeah, I think it looks pretty good. Yeah.
The one by smoking, I know, wasn't that amazing? We were watching the show, of course, and I see it every shooting day, at the beginning, end of the day, and I'm like. Lettering, what is that? Oh, yes, you know, I saw the big. Oh, yeah, that's been set, and I'm like.
It's gonna be a lot of.
Big shoes, Phil.
I should ask him questions with a humorous comment.
All right, so we're ready to begin. Thank you for your patience, we just did the groundbreaking for the Gem City Market, which, no offense, it would've been more fun to stay there with all the folks than it would. Yeah, I love you all, but.
No offense.
No offense, but we're here to talk about development and get our update around development, so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, this is your third development update of the year, where we will have economic development, planning community development, and citywide development providing reports with regards to development activities in, in, throughout the city, and investment that those development activities have attracted. And at the end, we will finish our presentation with a, with the downtown geography, and then you will notice a new guest at the table, Mr. Scott Murphy, well, from the Downtown Dayton Partnership, will be doing a presentation on the Wayfinding Study and planning efforts that have been underway with the Downtown Dayton Partnership. So, I will, Karen, I believe you're kicking us off, so I'll turn it over to Karen.
Tori, can you hit the lights so the slides show up better? Not the other way. Yeah, there we go, okay. So, Tony and I have a tag team, so, giving you some updates on West. So, with the Choice Grant, you recall that part of the allocation to the city and the housing authority was a million dollars that had to be spent on capital improvements, and we're focusing on Germantown Street. The murals are underway, there's one being painted that started this week, near Broadway, uh, sorry, near Ger- uh, Danner and Germantown. Um, their gate, the gateways are being developed with the city engineers. We have thirty-five people signed up for home improvement loans, and twenty are in progress right now. Three businesses have done all the paperwork for the business facade improvements.
Which businesses are they?
I don't know, uh, I will find out, I don't know all of them offhand, um, but we do, I will be able to communicate that to you guys. Um, we have, um, two local artists that have been working, um, with the community on designs for banners, um, which I don't have today because I don't want to reveal them until we do that with them. Um, but we've been socializing the art, um, the colors you see at the bottom are the colors that have been chosen by the neighborhood, and at next time we meet, um, probably before then, we'll have an event, you guys will be able to see those banners go up. Cool. And we've been working with RTA on placement all along Germantown Street, so lots of stuff before the end of the year to see there. Um, wanted to give update on Caroline Edgemont, you all recall you had approved the plan at the end of the year, and so, uh, there's been a lot of progress in really a relatively short amount of time. Uh, Welcome Park is, um, being redeveloped to include amenities for the neighborhood as well as a bike park, and there's three hundred thousand dollars that's been raised for that. Uh, the Neighborhood Association has got a grant to do some branding for their community, uh, citywide Revival Vista Grant, so we have a full-time community organizer that can be working with these neighborhoods. And we also were able to get some, uh, grants for capital improvements, uh, to the garden, the solar garden. Um, and we talked last time about Fiberverse going to the Woodyear School Site, which is a big investment, uh, in that neighborhood. The yellow line you see is a new community reinvestment area, um, that we put in place, um, I believe you guys approved it last, uh, last week, maybe? And you see it picks up both, um, the Fairgrounds and Carolons, so as part of the Carolons' plan, um, one of their goals was to have a CRA, so they'd have a development tool, Edgemont already has one, so we thought, okay, well, let's just go across the river and do one at the same time, and so that's in place, which provides some incentive for development. Um, and then right Dunbar Place making, um, we were able to engage UD's graphic design arts, uh, art class to come up with banners.
Look great.
Yeah, and it really turned out fantastic, and so, um, this is the product, um, we have, uh, several of the buildings that we're trying to develop with the CDC out there wrapped, and then we have these new banners, so, yeah, but out there, it was pretty cool. And then on the development end, we did secure, uh, with Wright Dunbar the financing to build out the Rubenstein for the expansion of Zeke's Pharmacy, that's underway, you see some construction pictures there, and it will be done in November. All the finished space in Wright Dunbar is now totally leased up, um, and the city, uh, has engaged internally some planning for what is the next phase of Wright Dunbar, uh, and we had, I think our first meeting was last week. We also mentioned Walker Fames coming up, October thirty-first, our John Gallow's being named Walker Fame, so get your tickets now. And, uh, um, Pineview, we are continuing doing community planning there, um, the city has a partnership with the Land Bank here for renovation of homes and demolitions, so that represents a half a million dollars that's been invested there. We know, all know about the Lake Project, that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand invested, and we are working with the neighbors, uh, some additional improvements, and the, um, seniors in the community, the elders that are in the community really want to try to create some kind of maintenance fund, maybe a fund at the Dayton Foundation, so that everything that's been done to make it look as good as it looks today can perpetuate it to the future. So, we're, we've set up some meetings, um, with the foundation on that, so I think that's really great planning on their part, and we will, um, continue to work with them on getting that set up. And that, I think, is West.
Okay, um, moving north to the north-central land use area, the, the primary thing I want to, to share in this geography is some of the work that UDA has done, uh, in this geography most recently. Um, just to, just to refresh your memory, you know, UDA did their work in, in the west geography, and we are working our way through a socialization plan with that. Most recently, they've, they did work in, in this north-central geography, and then we will move, of course, to, uh, to northeast and southeast. Um, so, you know, this is one example of the work that they did, this is the current, uh, view of Grace United Methodist Church Geography, they said, hey, you know, we'd like to revisit some ways, uh, in which we use our facilities and our property. UDA are, you know, extremely, extremely talented when it comes to visualization and planning as well, um, envisioned a, a, a campus with more of a presence on Salem, ways to better utilize the, uh, the land holdings in that geography, and ad housing, things of that nature. Uh, Lower Salem was, uh, as, as you, uh, I'm sure recall, a major, uh, component of the discussion, uh, we talked about Lower Salem today and its challenges with this, with this current street section, uh, mainly its, its width, uh, and, uh, I would say pedestrian unfriendliness, um, in terms of opportunities, uh, there's several emerging in the geography, including the aforementioned Gem City Market, uh, additional, uh, market rate, um, interest, eh, outside of downtown, and then, of course, there is tremendous, uh, historic facilities with which to work. Um, but beyond that, uh, we worked with UDA on a number of visualizations for this geography, and it helps envision a Salem Avenue corridor that has more of a presence along the street, that is more walkable, bicycle friendly, uh, more dense, includes housing and some retail. Um, and so it really, you know, is a vision for, for advancing the Salem Avenue corridor as a quality, uh, place, not just, uh, a throughway. So this is, uh, another visualization done by UDA, this is, of course, the current status, and then they, um, have put forth this vision with input, a great deal of input from, from residents and, and neighbors and businesses along the way. Um, I know there was participation amongst the commission and the effort to, to engage those neighborhoods, and I, I just thought it was fantastic, we've met numerous times out there at, at Sean Acres, and the participation we got, um, was, was just through the roof, and so the results have been shared with them, they've provided feedback on, on the UDA renderings, and we continue to communicate with them, and we'll, um, of course, socialize the, the results when they're finally complete with, with those, uh, neighborhoods in the geography.
Tony, you know, I've said this before, but those, those folks, Chris and I, particularly, and all my colleagues have worked hard to make sure that they're involved in the process, but you have got to give back to them, follow through on promises, because we've been telling them we're gonna help them for a long time.
Right. The, in terms of implementation, one of the things that is actually occurring now is a conversation about the rebuild of Salem Avenue. Phase one, uh, will actually be under construction in twenty twenty-one, but the actual design discussion is occurring now, um, and that's, you know, a real, real project that I think can really jumpstart some of this, um, UDA work, and really helps put in perspective why one does all this visualization and, and planning, it's not just because it's fun, but because it, it will help advance the reality. You wanna talk about Gem City?
Yep, I mean, you guys all there, just at the great news that they have identified all the financing, and they're just getting all the legal documents together, and you went to the crowd, right? It was great, lots of people, very exciting. Very cool.
Excellent, wanted to show you an, an update of, this is, this is the senior housing, uh, development on the Omega Campus, being done by MVAH, um, it is, uh, eighty-one units, one hundred and fifty minutes. Um, it, uh, went through our local housing tax credit process and was successful in that endeavor, and I, I think it's, uh, one of my favorite things about it is the, the design of the building and the way that they, uh, really be, the way that the building interacts with the neighborhood around it, it doesn't turn a, a blank face to the neighborhood, they try to take some visual cues from, from this awesome neighborhood around it with, uh, the natural materials and, and the gables and things of that nature, so I think they did a nice job on that. Um, this is the, the bike path, uh, along the Wolf Creek, along the north side of Wolf Creek, this is where it goes through the former Dayton Tire Site. Just to put that in the context.
Thank you for that context.
Um, that, that was, uh, in this area here, that's the, the red, uh, the red line here, it's, at this time, uh, would be on street, uh, but the plan is, uh, to utilize the funding sources available to us and actually have the bike path go along the, the north bank of the river, which would be a really, really cool bike path.
Very nice, very pretty.
Yeah. Um, moving on to more bits. Karen?
Um, so, uh, we have a big road project coming up again in this area next year, and so this is the straightening out of Valley Street, it will be done in less than a year, and, um, in addition to, um, creating, you know, fixing a safety issue in terms of that road, it also creates new park space for the neighborhood. So you see these areas, um, Area One, uh, because of global change, creates a new opportunity for the, um, the neighborhood to redesign their, their space, and, uh, we also have Area Two, which is, um, a gravel lot currently owned by the city, that could be turned into something, and so we've done a lot of outreach, we had a meeting with the neighborhood leaders, um, on what are our next steps on this, and you see those listed up there, and all this is gonna lead to, we're gonna do a design session with the neighborhood in October, and we'll get the date to you. Uh, similar to what we did in Choice, where it's very interactive, people could come in, walk around the room, and look at these, and see how, uh, how they can further develop the space, how to make it more friendly to the river, take advantage of the bikeway. Um, right now, you, we have a monument in, in the street that you really can't visit, or you could run over. So, so, you know, you can see. Here we go, so this is a really, really big space, and so, and Blood Memorial Park is, is nice, but it's really old, so we need to inventory everything there and freshen it up, so it's been a really good process, and we need to kind of figure out what people want, because then we have to go raise money for it.
Right.
This is the first step, but so far it's been, it's been pretty positive. I also wanted to show you Croc's expansion, which is awesome, this is the school site across from the Croc Center, um, that they have, uh, almost finished building out, so that, that's astroturf, you know, and they have, uh, uh, bleachers and a, um, what do you call it, a sound booth, they have all kinds of things, but they've really done a fantastic job. They've also added a small skate park, um, to the other campus, so, this was more of the Croc Endowment money that was around for the first build, that some, when cities didn't use, some cities didn't, they put it back out, our Dayton group went after it, and so we have another amenity, so, this is really neat.
And it's, I mean, Croc is used heavily by the neighborhood around, uh, very heavily.
It's a bit of a regional draw too, because of the highways and stuff.
Right, but I just know, like, the field, and those folks, they really knew it as, like, third, which was the vision for us, because I had to see that.
So it's really, really looks great, and they'll probably do some kind of event, I would think, in a couple of weeks, it should be done, so.
Okay, we have, uh, downtown and southeast, uh, combined in this instance, uh, a lot of the projects combined, uh, both geographies cross them both, and it's interesting to me, that's really the only two land use areas that aren't, that aren't separated by a river, a riverway or a highway, so I thought it just makes sense to kind of combine them both. So I thought it just makes sense to kind of combine them both. Okay, so there's this little building downtown called the Arcade. Yeah, yeah, update wise, the demolition and environmental remediation are complete in the basement level and the ground level. It's in various stages of completion on the upper levels. As you can see in the top photo, masonry work is being done to the exterior. Several methods of stabilization have been employed. And work continues on, on phase one. Also for the phase two, which is, of course, the north side of it, will be a fall application for state historic tax credits. Put this in here, I think it's important to mention, and it's not so much necessarily, well, the images are beautiful, but the subject of this slide is really the block by block analysis that we are endeavoring to do for a vision of downtown Dayton. You know, we often get asked, as citywide and planning and economic development get asked, hey, what's the vision for this block? Do you have any ideas for what you want here? And we've, you know, are now able to answer so often, well, actually, yeah, you better have a vision, you know, when you're asked that. And so that's, that's really the purpose of this effort, to go block by block and provide inspiration and ideas for how each block downtown in the core may materialize. The fire blocks, work continues on the DPNL Building, which is where Century Bar was, as well as the Elks Building and the Huffman Block. In this phase one, there are ninety-four residential units and, of course, ground floor commercial retail spaces. Lot of work going on out there at Sinclair, including the electric, electric grid updates. Of course, the, the construction work on Fourth and Fifth. And this is kind of an exciting project in that, you know, those streets are going to become really pedestrian friendly, you know, beyond what, what we see traditionally in this area. Just, just a great project in terms of a multimodal transportation network upgrade. And they're also adding, you know, various gateway features, entrance enhancements to really help the legibility of the campus. Because, you know, I don't think that was considered strongly when it was built in whatever it was, seventy-four or something.
Right.
That wasn't the name of the game, so they're really making great enhancements. Centerfield Lofts here at Sears and First, it's a hundred and twelve residential units. Should be ready to go here in a couple of months. The two buildings in the center there, Avant Garde is occupied from an office standpoint. This year yet, hopefully, the ground floor and basement spaces, commercial spaces will be occupied. Six Oh One, which is the building to the west, at the left of Avant Garde, is anticipated to be a fall applicant for state historic tax credits. So, you know, the neat thing for me on Avant Garde is how loyal they stayed to the history of the building. They retained so many original details. And was, that one actually wasn't a state historic tax credit project, but they still kept with the spirit of the program. This is all DPL National Register Historic District. At, let's see, Webster and Monument, twenty-seven, let's see, well, it's, it's office space as well as some convenience retail space. So sort of a mixed-use building there at, at Webster and Monument. I think that concludes the litter portion of the presentation. Exciting news we got a couple of weeks ago, our national, I brought up wrong. This is our National Register Historic District nomination.
Dayton's in the state, Dayton's in the state, right?
What's that?
The district is the largest.
So we are the, we are the largest city in Ohio to have a comprehensive downtown historic district. That's all encompassing, all, everything from, you know, the historic courthouse to mid-century, nineteen seventy-four, beyond the mid-century time period, all in one historic district is really, really unique for the state of Ohio. So the, the upshot really here is now some, some forty buildings downtown that would not otherwise be eligible for historic tax credits are now eligible for those tax credits. So there's a lot of buildings that wouldn't be individually, individually eligible for the National Register. But as contributing to a district, they are.
They are. They get twenty percent.
Yeah, so, so then they can get the state of federal with that.
Federal, federal automatic, right?
Yeah, well, they got to be on the National Register.
They have to qualify historically, but this helps.
Helps them, right?
Right, but they're not competitive, yeah.
Right, because federals aren't competitive. So if, I'm just asking, so go back to the slide. Does your building as well have to be designated as well as being in the federal district?
It, it has to be contributing to the National Register District. So, you know, if something built in the nineties, obviously would not be eligible, right? Right, but everything from the Kettering Tower and, and earlier, or really the Keybank Tower and earlier.
Would contribute.
They all, they contribute.
So they would get twenty percent.
They can, they could get both the federal and compete at the state.
So if it's twenty percent, that's pretty good.
Yeah. Speaking of historic tax credits, this is another fall expected applications. The Barclay Building anticipated for over conversion to a hotel. Still, still, yeah, you know, it's rugged. Dayton Motor Car Building at fifteen McDonough, which also receives state historic tax credits, being converted to kind of modern office phase, kind of unique office uses in the Oregon East area. Speaking of the Oregon East area, I wanted to just put this in there. We continue to work with the various property owners in that geography on a little bit of a land use plan. We've been having conversations lately and are actually going to implement a new on-street parking plan for, for those property owners, which they're very excited about. And if you've ever driven through there, you've seen the numerous, numerous trucks that utilize the streets as a parking truck terminal. So we, we'd like to. So for, for those.
For this place?
Right, we have, sure. So for those property owners, we, we are implementing a new parking plan for the on-street area.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's just the first phase of the land use plan. On Main, the process continues. It has received support from the Greater Downtown Land Use Board. It will be at Plan Board for approval on October eighth. And it will be at City Commission in mid-December. All the boards have, have been very supportive of both the process and the concept up to this point. It's a plan development. And the way it's written is it'll be brought forth as a plan development for approval. But then the actual detailed subsequent phases, when they have more detail to the buildings and the sites, still come back through the land use process. So this isn't the final approval. They actually come back for site design review, which is actually how we did Water Street and a few other large plan developments. We think it works out really well from a public engagement standpoint to be able to, to see the details of the buildings. The, the Rehab Center, the Encompass Miami Valley Hospital Rehab Building continues. It's, it's under construction. I, I really like the street presence that this building has obtained. I know that Carl worked very hard to get this design where it would have such a street presence on Main Street, so we're happy about that. Speaking of medical uses, here on Wayne Avenue, there, there will be a new one finishing here. And actually, the main story of this, it, it, for me, is really interesting, is the evolution of this building over time. And I like this slide because it illustrates that even a building that probably isn't considered, you know, extremely exceptionally beautiful can have a future in a number of lights in a variety of ways that you may not even have thought of, I'm sure, when it was built.
Right. That's funny.
The first, that, first Gagné House has been completed out there on Pulaski. And there's so many rehabs also in this area that I was, that I was been thinking of. And Abby from my staff and I have spent a lot of time out there lately. And this, this quadrant of South Park has really changed a lot lately in, in good ways. And a lot of rehab going on out there, and then this new construction as well. This is the former Patterson, Patterson Kennedy Site. It is right now in the, the land use process. They will be back at Greater Downtown Land Use Board on October seventh. It will be at Plan Board on October eighth. There's still conversations ongoing between the boards, the neighborhood, the developers, and, and, you know, what's, will work to, to get to a satisfactory point for, for this site. But as it stands here, this is a thirty-five million dollar project. On Main Street, the, the shared building between the Development Coalition, FIT Center and the Dayton Foundation. I know at least the two of them, the Foundation and the DDC are in the building now. I think FIT Center moves in here shortly as well. One Thirty West Second is undergoing nice building upgrades. There, there's a new, you know, new conference room, fitness room, facade changes, new branding, so it's, you know.
And they wash the windows.
And they wash the windows.
Big deal. And I heard their, like, co-working space is already full.
Oh, really? I didn't hear that it's full. Okay.
Is that true?
It's pretty, it's pretty close to it. They've, they've had really strong interest so far. It's been great to see.
Probably because they wash the windows.
Well, yeah.
Makes a difference.
The, our Oregon Parking Garage has been through a three-point-three million dollar upgrade, much-needed upgrade since, significant upgrades hadn't occurred since it was built in seventy-four. Major lighting upgrades, all LED, new, new, new skin, new surface membrane on the roof, on the ramps. So obviously structural work involved. So, you know, important stabilization. And I know this is a development presentation, but I think a parking garage of this nature is a fun.
How, how full is it?
Well, so it's interesting. Do you want to answer that?
No, go ahead, Eli. I'll hear what you have to say.
So I get excited because I, I get, I get excited because I parked there for several years. So I, I like, I, I have a special place in my heart for the TC Garage. During the, I'll say during the day. The Oregon Garage. During the day, I, it must be more full now than, than every day since it was built in nineteen seventy-four. I mean, it is really well-used during the day.
Yeah, well, the premier and.
And the various other users that have space there. And then, you know, I, I think the objective is can you now complement that daytime usage?
With nighttime.
With nighttime.
That's the Oregon Garage.
Yeah.
That's the name.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So, so anyway, that's my story with the TC Garage. No, Oregon Garage. Just some, some more public works projects. I just think it's important to show some of these projects because they do help support development, in the sense of a development project, presentation. Main Street Bridge, that picture on the bottom is the.
When will the Main Street Bridge be done?
I, I think we're a few months away. Fred, you got a few?
A couple of months.
Like before winter?
I heard until October.
Really? Will they open up Revue? Will they open up the street again, like Revue?
Will they open up back up?
Yeah. That's just closed for the bridge. Very sad.
Belmont Park Bike Path is the image on the bottom there. Washington Street is longer than a couple of months.
But Kiwi opens.
Kiwi's very close.
It'll be in two months.
Into October.
Yeah, Kiwi's supposed to open.
Ending on a couple murals here. This is one behind Smoke and Barbecue. It's kind of the gateway to the Oregon District. And this is my last slide. I'll end it with love. That's the extent of our presentation. We can answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Questions about development, guys?
I'm just really excited about it. It's amazing how, it seems like it took a long time, but for a lot of these projects, but wow. Think back. Well, just good work, right? No questions, this is common.
Good. Mr. Murphy?
Cool. Brian, can you switch me over on this slide?
Good delegation, Brian.
There you go. So we wanted to give you a little bit of a preview on a signage and wayfinding activity that, you know, we're, we're presenting it, but certainly has been a team effort through our Greater Downtown Plan Partners. And certainly many city staff have contributed to this. It's, it's also, you know, it's a separate presentation in this, but it's very much a layer to what Tony and Karen just shared in terms of how this fits. It's a layer in terms of what's happening downtown and the projects that are happening. But also in, and, you know, Tony brought up the block by block. We've also been having some really good dialogue within planning and engineering, looking at streetscapes and really sort of elevating streetscape design, how can we leverage all these projects that are work to really elevate the public round? And really thinking strategically about our corridor planning. So there's more to come there from that perspective. But the signage and wayfinding is really just a layer in that. So I, I guess, think of it in that context. But it's, it's certainly an important layer and one that we've made some progress on over the last year. So first of all, sort of thinking about the role of signage and wayfinding, the first reaction that everybody has is, okay, in the age of smartphones, so what is the role of, of signage anymore? But really, sort of, there still is a navigation element to signage, right? So even if you're using your phone, it reinforces that sense of arrival. It should, you know, directs to those last turns to that destination where you're going to park relative to that final destination. But good wayfinding really transcends navigation. And it's really about fostering a sense of place and reinforcing the brand of the city. And really helping people who are unfamiliar with their place. Because the great thing is we have all sorts of new visitors and people that are experiencing downtown again for the first time. But they're not oriented to the downtown, so it's about speeding up that process. So fundamentally, it's not for us. It's really for people that are new to the downtown and really helping them think about our place and how we want them to understand our place. So we think it's, it's a really, really important layer to all the things that are happening. We, back about late last year, contracted with Guide Studio. You all are very familiar with Guide Studio. We've, we've certainly enjoyed working with them. They are certainly very familiar with our city and have been a pleasure to work with from that perspective. They have been our help, expertise in this process. We've had a steering committee that really is the, the Greater Downtown Plan Committee that has been around the table for this. So again, a number of folks from different organizations that have been part of that steering committee and, and working with Guide Studio at various steps here. And then we've also had a very broad stakeholder committee of different organizations, institutions that are impacted by the signage and wayfinding program and certainly have an interest in this. And they have been part of this planning process really over the last year. So I want to share two elements to this. One, the overall sort of master plan thinking relative to the system, like how do we want it to function? And then some conceptual designs, very high-level designs of how we think the signage could look. And again, all of this is preliminary at this point. We're still at a very early stage in the process. So really, it's about collecting feedback and making sure that we do something that's best for the community. So there's two sets of signage that we're looking at relative to this program. One vehicular level signage and then pedestrian level signage. And really important to the vehicular thinking is this idea of segregating the downtown into districts. Say five or six districts that help sort of simplify and organize a place. And directing traffic to those districts. And then once in their districts, then directing them to their final destination and the parking within that destination. Very important to this is that it's about driving the best experience. So it's not always the fastest way to get to a particular destination, but really about what are the ways that we want people to go? How do we want them to come into the downtown? Where do we want them to park? What do we think is going to be the best experience overall? And so a lot of the work of that steering committee was thinking about what Guide Studio calls journey mapping. Okay, you're coming into downtown from a certain part. And then where do we want them to turn? And then you start to overlay all these different destinations. And where the journey maps intersect is where you put the signs, where are the decision points? So there's a whole master plan side of this, and I'm not getting into, that's got a lot of detail to it that was provided for this first stage of the activity. And again, with some thinking about destinations, what are those high-level destinations? Really those public institutional level destinations that ought to be on the signs. The other side on the pedestrian wayfinding is really about, okay, so now somebody has got to that, that destination, or at least where they're parking, how do they get their, how do they walk from the parking garage to their destination? And then also encouraging exploration around that destination. So it's a five-month walk to Dragon State, to Fitter Field or something like that. So people can really think about what's close and helping connect the dots from that perspective. So this slide was probably the most, Tony knows because he was in a lot of these conversations, it was probably the most talked about graphic that we had within our steering committee is this idea of districts. So this is what Guide Studio proposed. It's six districts. They are amorphous blobs for a reason because it's really preliminary at this point. But it's sort of conveys the thinking around this. As we go to the next step of the planning process, we're going to have to get more specific about these district names. These are really just placeholders at this point. And we're also going to have to start to draw some lines relative to where we see, see these boundaries being because it will influence what goes on the signs. So six districts, really good branding already, certainly around the Oregon District. To the same extent, Webster Station. Then you start to think about the center of the downtown and the Central Business District feels like its own unique place. So they suggested something like a center city district. Certainly there's a civic campus, if you think about the courts buildings, municipal buildings, county buildings, that's, that's shown in, in yellow. And the southwestern quadrant of downtown has a strong sort of entertainment, or education connectivity when you think about CJ Sinclair. That's one we think that really spans the river, so connects Central State on it. So there's something that really has sort of a connective tissue there. And then something that's more aspirational, but on the northwestern quadrant of downtown. And then, something that's more aspirational, but on the northwestern quadrant of downtown, and, but, but still very consistent with the riverfront master plan, this idea of a riverfront district that really spans both sides of the river.
Both sides of the river, yes, cool.
So again, the next step of this is about finalizing these district names, these choices, and also where the, the boundaries should be. So the second half of this is, is what do the signs actually look like? And so, we spent a lot of time looking at, they showed us several different examples of signage and gateways, and all sorts of things from other cities, did some mood boards and things like that, and based on all that and those conversations and the interactions with the stakeholder committee, suggested a theme and a design inspiration that they call Modern Industrious, something that is giving a nod to Dayton's industrial and manufacturing heritage, but really feels modern. So really, the, the industrial part of this is really in the choice of materials, so metal materials, you'll get a better feel for that here in the next slide, some strategic pops of color, we do some really great stuff with lighting in terms of bridges and overhead, underpass lighting in the downtown, and there's opportunities to enhance that, and also with some colored lining, but also provides some functional lighting for pedestrians and vehicles on the streetscape, going for a concept that really feels resilient and will have some longevity in terms of its, its relevance. So this is an example, a sketch of the vehicular directional, you think of the, the sort of the signpost, again, this sort of nod to industrial, sort of looks like an I-beam, some mesh metal material that the downtown is placed on. It's funny, because this, this, this little swoop, Tony knows, came out of the, we looked at about four or five design iterations of this, a first iteration had really strong connectivity to the city of Dayton logo, and that actually, that sort of swoop stayed in this throughout the design as it evolved. You can see the color palette choices, the district identified at the top, which you'll see a render in here in a moment, that then has the district color behind it. We're pulling in Oregon District Purple, that's already been on some of their banners, and then of course, the RTA Link Green is another color choice that will be part of the palette. There's some lighting, program of lighting opportunities here at the top of this sign, and a similar thing that carries over to the pedestrian signage. So you can see this rendered on the streetscape, this doesn't have the, we left the directional blank on here, so that, that's, but this is where the direction will go, and you can get a sense of how the colors play out, how the mesh looks for the sign, and where it would place on the streetscape. You can see the parking signage back here. This is a similar sketch of the pedestrian directional, three different options really we have, one with this mesh background, there's opportunities to, to backlight the, the lettering, so that could be kind of cool, more programmable lighting opportunities here at the top, and then the district identified at the very top of the pedestrian sign. This, this iteration has an option for like an updatable panel, so if we had something that we were trying to promote on a seasonal basis or something like that, we'd have the option to start to swap those things out. And so you get a sense of what this looks like, again, there's no actual directional signage on here, we left that blank. And then, we also had some good conversation around the gateways, so if you think about what other, other cities have done, you know, sometimes they go for a heavy signage type approach, or you think about this big arch or something like that, and what we wanted to do was something that was a little bit more eclectic than that, so the recommendation for the gateways is really use, utilize the, the built environment, engage our local artist community, and do something unique at those entrance locations. They're already communicating sense of arrival, how can we sort of reinforce that sense of arrival with something dramatic from a gateway perspective? Really, do something unique, tell a place-based story, you know, downtown is very unique, and of course, we want to do something that's, that's representative of that brand. These are some examples of, of different overpasses and other types of things, but this would, if you're thinking about where would these kind of things happen, certainly Main Street Bridge is a really important gateway, you think about South Main Street when you come underneath thirty-five and the Sixth Street, or on Third Street on both sides, when you come underneath, underneath the I-75 overpass on West Third Street, or on East Third Street when you come underneath the, the train overpass before you get to Webster. So there's lots of different opportunities there, where they're already communicating the sense of arrival, people are feeling that they just entered the downtown, how can we reinforce that with a really cool gateway feature? So in terms of next steps, we have been continuing to share this with our key stakeholders and community partners, and collecting feedback, and making updates to the design. We're looking at, funding opportunities, beginning to seek funds in terms of the actual signage program, which is really the part that we can define at this point, because the gateways are a little bit going to be variable to each location. The signage package is around nine hundred thousand dollars for both the vehicular and pedestrian signage, and so it's our intent to start to, to pursue those funds, and that, because quite frankly, we think that this is something that is a really important layer relative to the downtown, and people are coming downtown now, so it's really think, something we think is important to start to pursue in the near term. And then we're actually re-engaging, the stakeholder committee is going to re-engage with Guide Studio here towards the end of the year for the next stage in the design activity, and getting some more specifics around the design, some of those district choices, and, and also getting more specific on costs and other detailed design elements. So with that, any, any questions?
Questions? This was a good update, I appreciate you coming forward, just kind of, I know there's been tons of discussion in the community about it, so it's good.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, very cool, and you know, it's, it's nice that now we're getting to the point where people don't know where to go downtown.
Yeah.
It's a good sign. That means we're people, so, so that's great, thank you, Scott. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
All right, we'll see you at six.